First of all, apologies for the absence.
Paul Mills, longstanding private member.
And don't forget Mr Elliot, who is attending an accountant meeting here. I'm sure he would have apologised.
Right, it's me too. Me too. Take the phone to accept them.
I have to abstain. Because I was only a councillor at present, I wasn't on the committee at that time.
No, these are for apologies.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I've already said minutes. I must wake up, sorry.
We just go through the listed items.
Sorry about that.
So, I will propose those.
The rest of them have been done individually. They have to be done individually.
Yeah, Vince has proposed, yeah, we'll do Paul first.
Yeah.
So Vince has proposed on second up.
We'll take it in terms of weight.
Okay, all those in favour?
And then Paul, propose for Michael?
Second up. All those in favour?
Right, thank you. Declaration of interest. Any members are asked to declare if they have any... If required, any disclosable pecuniary interest they may have in respect to items on the agenda.
I think, I'm not 100% sure and I should have asked beforehand, but I think I have to declare another because two of them are within my ward.
You don't need to declare an interest for that, it's only if you are...
Very close.
They're not up where they're across the field.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no problem with that.
Any other interests that may have in respect to items on the agenda? Nope. Brilliant. Minutes from last meeting, I think I need to suspend standing order, whatever it was in the last one I did. Because you weren't elected, David wasn't here, so therefore I'm the only one. So... I propose that... The suspension of standing order, 6G, is once again implemented so that I can propose and sign off the minutes of last meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. So I would like to propose that the minutes are a true reflection. I will vote for that.
That's fine, yeah?
Yeah, okay.
Just issue each one, each page.
The date or not?
Uh, no, you don't need to do that to the end. So just issue each one. And then just sign that as well, it's in the table, it's fine.
That date's all right.
That dates fine, yeah, because it's that meeting yet, it's not the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Deputation by public, we don't seem to have any members of the public available. Plan applications, so... We'll go into the first one, which is a two-storey front extension, single partial two-storey extension to the rear and render to existing brickwork, 14 Catmouth Park Road. Has anybody been able to see the building?
I might look at the plans.
Yeah.
Everything seems okay, I mean, when you've got an extension on the front, you're allowed up to 0.5 anyway, without planning.
I think because it's in the rear of the building...
It's front, what, it's a front two-storey, like a lorry at the front.
Yeah, and then there's a bit at the back.
I think it's within renovation of that anyway, the front.
Do we have, Alison, sorry, through the chair. Do we have the document there which shows existing photos and a good artist impression of what's to come? Because I think that's important to see. We're smack-bang in the middle of a conservation area.
There's quite a few of them now, they've been doing this for, for the extension, in a way they do that modern look.
They allow more artists to do this.
Oh, they are. These are the ones that weren't on the... Basically.
The back extension could actually be classed as a conserv...
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't need planning for it anyway. Because it's all class, isn't it? If you've got, if you've got two sides of class, it can be classed as a conserv.
This as well was on the line. I personally don't have a problem with the back of the property.
No.
But I do have a problem with the front.
With the two-storey.
And also the setting of the area. It is a conservation area.
It is, yeah.
And the conservation officer doesn't appear to have given a report on it.
No.
So that doesn't help with me making a decision. But I think, I'm not against the modern development of buildings, but because this is in quite a nice conservation area, I would personally, myself, object to it on the grounds that it's not, it's not in keeping with, it's too modern for, for that environment from the images I've seen at the front.
So the front won't keep it?
It is rendered though, isn't it? That front is rendered.
Yeah.
Which gives the contract, which can be...
So, in fairness to the applicant, I don't know who was responsible, but they do point out that this building, well I use my words, ruined because it has mismatched windows and things like that.
Absolutely.
But I think there should have been a report from the conservation officer which perhaps would suggest how they could put the front right. Because I don't believe adding this to the front in a modern style is in keeping.
Yeah. What we need to know really, I didn't have time to go, because I've been doing too much with Ocker and Blum, is what we really need to know, has anyone set a precedence with that type of a extension on the front? It might have, it might have already been done before, if it had, probably that's why the environmental...
We can't make a decision on a precedent.
We can't now.
But I don't see anything, I don't see anything modern
Have you looked?
In the area. There's a, there's a fairly on the corner there of that part of the road, there's a fairly modern timberish type building. That's what we've got in that area, is a lot of timber type buildings and a lot of brick. Whereas this one is going to be quite architecturally very modern and imposing. It's not hidden, you know, when you actually go down there and see it. But some of them at the back of the property, it's like the timber one I was mentioning, does have very nice glass backs.
First extension pending a...
Why don't we, why don't we say that we're okay with the development, but we need to have a look at the actual fabric of the front extension?
Well, we can defer it pending John Vista. I'm actually going there.
I'm a bit concerned, I can't remember the time, but the time, I'm quite, quite short on these things and I...
Let's ask them for an extension.
My personal view is that I, I object to the front because it's not really in keeping and far too modern. But whether that's a planning consideration, I think it's a town council comment if that was agreed with people, but that's just my view, it's in a conservation area and conservation, my understanding is you try and keep something as it is. So proposing something that's basically looking like a new building is not conservating or conserving the area.
The thing about this, Martin, is that it was constructed with bricks, which were the cheapest bricks you could get at that time. So what are we conserving, you know? I think what it looks as, what they're going to do is they're going to render all of it.
And a lot of glass, well they're extending at the front, they're not rendering that existing brick. They could actually be losing part of the house.
They haven't shown that, they haven't shown it on the plan that that's going to be brick, I don't know. Is it anywhere where they're keeping the brick?
Couldn't say.
Well, that will become part of the internal property, so we're, this is where I see it. It's been, it's been cladded in a very modern architectural way, that's what they're trying to do. And I think in a different location it wouldn't be an issue. It's just purely that you've got a very green woodland area there, if it's classed as slightly woodland, with alpacos on their doorstep and to plonk something new like that there, I think it's not in keeping with the surroundings.
Do you like proposal? Would you like to pose that?
Well, my comment that it's not, the front elevation is... Well, we don't have to refuse or we can make a comment that it's not in keeping if that's what you all agree with, you know, in a, for a conservation area.
Are you proposing that?
I can if you want me to change. Yeah, so if I propose that we have concerns that this property's in a conservation area and that the front, proposed front extension is not, is too modern for the area they're trying to conserve.
In keeping with the area and surrounding properties.
Yeah, I think that's allowed as a comment, isn't it?
It is, it's, it does actually say...
And we have no problem with it.
They're proposing to paint the brickwork white.
Yeah.
Or grey, dark grey, and, or render. I think that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to make it a complete modular.
It's going to be very modern and imposing in that area.
So, Martin has just proposed.
Yeah, and what Martin's saying is, it's correct. They are trying to convert it into a modern structure.
Yeah.
Now, if that goes against, you know, the environmental...
The in keeping with the area, yeah. Would you like to second that proposal?
I'll second it.
Can we just add to be fair that we have no problem with the rear of the property?
No.
Because that, as they put it, is a very fancy conservatory, isn't it? They probably wouldn't like to use that word, but...
Orinary.
Orinary is the modern word.
It'll be interesting to see whether there's any other property done like that in that area. Because once one's been done, then they're allowed to do that.
But as we pointed out at previous meetings, certain exception doesn't necessarily mean that the rules can be moved just because a precedence has been set.
To be honest, I don't think there's any conservation on that house like that.
So don't believe there'll be any conservation on the house. It's just not in keeping with the surrounding area.
Yeah.
So the proposal was, please.
The concerns is in the conservation area, the front extension is not in keeping with the surrounding properties, but we have no problem with the rear of the property.
Would you like to second that?
Yes, I'd say.
Yeah, right, so all those in favour? And I'll abstain. Thank you. Right. Item two. Proposed dwelling on 6 Dean Street. We don't know where Dean Street is. Any comments, Martin? No, just go round the table.
Oh, you're going the other way. I'm pleased to see on this one that there is a report from the conservation officer. Although I was fortunate enough when I visited the site that the gate was open.
Did not want to.
And it's a difficult one because I've made personal comments about in keeping, keeping a conservation area as it is or should be. But this is at the rear of a property, which is just basically an overgrown yard, which backs onto the back of the pub. So I, I don't see it, when I've looked at it, I can't see that I can object if it's going to make an additional house for somebody to live in. We're told this morning that there's a shortage of homes, small homes in Rotherham.
Personally, I don't think the conservation officer, I read his letter and I think really he doesn't know the story of this, this development. He's actually had plans passed for it before, because I can remember, there was no problem with the pub and shared actually plans passed. And that wasn't in keeping before. Not only that, it's, it's over, I, that big wall from Ford's, aren't it? It's a big, you know, the big extension that Ford's put on the back and that, it will hide it. So I, I think it'll make it look better, the Dean Street.
It doesn't, I don't think this is the one, there was one in a similar area. I think that residents came and objected, but there doesn't appear to be any objections to this.
There is actual foundations already for a property there, because she actually carried on. I mean, if they used the same footprint, he could have just carried on. But, no, I don't object to it.
I personally feel that Dean Street is a well-established street.
It is.
The position of the build will actually, won't be on the boundary line.
Yeah.
On the road itself, it's to the other end of the boundary. So, my personal view is that it's going to, they did make mention on the conservation about the materials being sourced. So in my opinion, I think we can...
Yeah, but you'll sort that out anyway, you'll sort that out after.
Yes, the conservation officer and planning, keep an eye on the whole structure.
A bit cheaper, a bit to fit.
I say I'm more than happy to propose this one.
Yeah?
I'll second it.
All those in favour?
Yeah.
Brilliant.
This next one I've just picked up, Martin, I didn't, I haven't picked it up this morning, you sent some stuff like, didn't you?
Um, I've jumped the page.
Oh, well, I remember.
Oh, yes, I hope in the...
You sent some lovely photos.
I'm hoping, I was hoping that members had seen the photograph, which the neighbour, the neighbour gave consent for me to take. Because it gave a visual impact on nearby properties.
Item three then.
I don't know why, because I think it came up for that one, I do apologize. But we've got the, the what's it, the pictures here, but you've been out of state, Martin, haven't you?
Yes, if members don't know exactly where it is, it's, it's just as you turn off of Hansman Drive, it's the old Hops called site and it's the house directly down the road.
You said Bellway.
Yes.
It's just got a road name at the moment.
Which seems to have been named after Prince George. Quite appropriate.
So item three then. Replacement timber fronts with masonry wall. Installation of UPVC clad aluminium framed greenhouse to Prince George Avenue. So we've all seen the plans, we know its location. David?
I saw your photographs, Martin, and I can't, can't quite make out what, where the fence is going.
No, no, it's a fence that's been removed. If you look at the, if you look at it, the picture, and you're looking to the right-hand side, it's got an apex, I think that's the correct description, roof.
That's right, yeah.
And that's the garage.
That's a good one.
And on the rear of the, of the garage is what appears to be a duplicate, but that is actually a wall, which...
To remove that fence?
Yes.
To remove that fence?
To remove that timber fence.
Yeah.
Okay, and then replace it with a brick fence, but also using that brick as the rear wall of a PVC aluminium clad aluminium clad PVC.
It's described as a greenhouse, but I, well, we can't dispute that.
Well, you can't dispute it, really.
It's a very smart greenhouse, which...
This is it.
At the end of the day.
Which apparently, reading into it, has retrospective planning we're considering. I actually spoke to the representative on site of Bellway Homes, who were constructing the property which this appears to be attached to and the lady kindly said they would be looking into that because they felt that permission would be needed.
Yeah.
The... I'm not going to say anything, but obviously the picture was with consent from the neighbour. They didn't want to make any comments, I think that's the saddest thing to say. There probably, I don't know, but there'll probably be other things coming forward because they seem to have a small property here, which has had a conservatory added on to the back.
Yeah, sure, right, yeah.
I don't remember that coming to council.
It did come.
And they've, so they've infilled with UPVC the footpath down the side as well. So to me personally, it looks like a lot of plastic and the fact that it's retrospective, I, I would be against it at this stage personally.
The, the whole problem is, is that you don't need, you don't need planning for the greenhouse?
Well, we obviously do because it's before, before us today. If it didn't need planning, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue, but if I...
Let's just go back to what the planning application is, is to replace a timber fence. So it's to take a timber fence down, replace with a masonry wall, that's the first part. The second part is the installation of a UPVC clad aluminium framed greenhouse.
Well, the wall obviously is, is a lot higher than what was the fence and it, and to me, it doesn't give the, it, it's blocked the view from residents, which they had out. And it looks like they've now got a, almost a row of garages rather than what was a plain timber fence at the bottom of their garden.
Yeah, you're right there, the problem is the wall is too high. If they'd have built a normal wall and put a greenhouse there, we couldn't object to it.
No.
But it's not, it's a wall to link the greenhouse to, and that's where the problem lies. And it is, it says that is the garage next door, isn't it? So I, I see the problem with it. Whether, whether we can object to it's another thing. I don't know, I don't know the ruling on walls.
I think we can object to it on, and I purely object to it. Well, obviously it's a retrospective, which they're entitled to do. But I, I object on it on the basis that it isn't really technically a wall that replaces the fence in a similar way.
No, you're right, you're right.
Well, that's, that's why it says replace timber fence with masonry wall. So in my opinion, if you're replacing something, you replace what is there already.
Yeah, and also I think it probably contravenes the height, although we don't, things change, but I believe that there are restrictions on heights of walls. I think you can't go above, I think it's six foot in the garden.
Is it a double skin wall?
It, it looks like breeze block on one side and brick on the other, so that would be classed double skin.
It means building range if it's double skinned.
Would you like to make a proposal?
Well, I propose that we, we don't approve either parts of the application. Possibly based on, if we have to break it down, the wall is too high.
Well, I mean, if, if we put that into it, that the wall is too high and that's why we can't approve it, if they'd have actually replaced it with the same...
A like-for-like.
Like-for-like to the fence, the same height as the fence, then we wouldn't have been able to do it.
Because it reduces the maintenance and also lots of problems with fences.
Yeah.
So we will refuse this application on the grounds of that the fence was not replaced like-for-like in walls like that.
Nothing to do with the greenhouse, the greenhouse.
Maybe we should just say not at the same height, because we can't really say when you're using words like for-like, can we?
Yeah.
And just not at, not in the appropriate height.
Yeah.
Would you like to second that?
So I proposed it, sorry.
I proposed it. I'll second it. All those in favour? Thank you. And number four. Proposed two-story front side extension to 22 Catmouth Park Road. Who would like to start me off on this one?
Shall I go first?
Yeah.
As it's in my ward. It's, it's again...
Our ward.
Our ward, sorry, well, I'm saying mine, because I'm speaking, I was saying mine, of your ward as well. The, the pictures as we see on the plans don't actually really show you what it really looks like. It's a nice quaint timber building, set down, slight slope. Also, once again, same street as one we considered earlier and conservation area. And I, I would object on similar grounds to the front changes to that building. I don't know what other people would think. There's a lot of timber in that building. I think when you choose to buy a property in a conservation area, perhaps you would think that the person would consider the consequences and the maintenance work involved.
So what's, what's your concerns, Martin?
It's very similar to the first applicant. I mean, this one is a totally different building and it is constructed with timber cladding or whatever, which is very, blends in with the conservation area.
In keeping with the area?
Yeah, I say, and it did actually sort of, when you look at the modern one further up, it, it, it's a similar...
The front elevation is on... Is it just a porch?
It's a large porch.
Wait, that says... Oh, that's the front, now that's the rear elevation there, that's the rear one, the big one.
The front, the front is the same.
That's existing, is that one?
It's taken it free, sort of taken the garage out of the way.
Yes, how far does that, we've got the plans, how far does that stick out on the front?
Isn't, the, the building itself is quite, I don't want to offend the residents if they ever come across the video and what they've said, but it's very oldie worldy building.
That's the side.
And as you can see from the garage, it's not, it's an old building, it's not intrusive and I think the additions and changes are...
See, the thing is about that one, the side there, it's... If it doesn't come out in front of the building line...
If it doesn't, well, it's a...
If it doesn't, then, then you can't object to it because you can have an extension on the side of just a...
To be fair, if you looked at the existing garage and then you look at the front elevation plan, it shows you that the new extension on the side doesn't go any further than the existing footprint of the garage, just linking the two up.
I don't think you can object to it.
Well, I personally feel that this is more in keeping with the area.
It's more in keeping with the area. The, the back's already been done by those, they've had a more modern extension on the back, set a precedence, that's probably set one for the others. But if it were on the back, it were on the back, so it would all right.
To me, this is more in keeping with the area.
It is.
I think a lot more thought has gone into the planning of this one.
Yes.
And I personally feel that we should fully accept this one.
I propose to accept this one.
I'll second that.
And I'll vote to be...
All those in favour?
Sorry, I'm voting against.
You're voting against, yeah. All those for?
Yes.
Okay, number five. Single story side extension and installation of six roof lights on 37 Dean Street. Would anybody like to?
Is that rear, is that the rear? This one here?
That's the rear, yeah, this is the front.
That's the front, that's the rear.
That's the rear, rear.
Yeah.
And that's the...
West, yeah.
So we've got east elevation, which is the front.
Yeah.
And then the west is...
What about the front elevation with the...
We've got a proposed front elevation, do you mind?
Front elevation with the side extension on.
That was on there. That one?
Yeah, but you need to see it on the actual...
I see, sorry. Proposal side, I'm not sure of that.
Let's see floor plan, anyway. Oh, it's an infill, oh yeah, I did see that. It's, it's diffilling, can you hear that? It's, it's not really a side extension, it's an infill. No, you can't object to that.
And so personally, I would...
Yeah, you can't object to that. It's an infill, it's not...
It's a very small, well, it's just a width of a foot path, really.
You can't object to that.
Extension, I, I don't really, if, if the brick works in keeping with the terrace, then there would be no reason for you to object.
It's down the side as well, and it's infill down the side now, no problem.
Yeah.
So you proposed that, did you?
Yes, I proposed that.
Second? Second? Your second, yeah.
And people won't be able to see the funny things that are on the back.
Is that a second?
Yes.
All those in favour? I don't think that much, it's a four's house. It's retrospective. It is.
I think it's called restoration. And I think the, um, conservation officer is paying special attention to what is probably Open High Street's oldest, um, building.
No, probably too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
This has been going on for a while, hasn't it?
And, um, I'm sure they'll do it properly and.
Yeah, not only that, it's up to the conservation office.
Well, the, the detail of the photographs we've been shown on the plan shows that people are paying to attention to
That's right.
the smallest detail, I think down to, I read something about a door handle and a light switch.
Was it a grade two?
I'm not.
It must be.
It just says listed building.
Two, or grade in just the buildings in Britain.
Yeah.
Not sure what power it's listed.
They, they do a good job of that.
No, they've done a very good job.
It's needed doing for a long time.
Yeah, needed doing, yeah.
So no concerns, Martin?
No, I've read the reports and things, and the conservation officer is paying particular attention to this and.
So would somebody like to propose this for me, please?
I propose that we accept this.
Proposed by Martin, accept.
Of course, yeah.
And definitely by David, all those in favour?
Martin? It's going to be a story, Martin.
No, I'm just reading it.
You've been going to the midnight oil.
Just reading it, trying to be prepared.
The next one, item seven, is the various works to trees, including felling of the majority of trees as well as pruning. Felling is required to facilitate repairs and restoration work to the curtain wall. The pruning proposed will, uh, proposed have been made to bring retained trees under proactive management regime in the context of the potential increase in access beneath the canopy of the retained trees, Open Castle, Castle Lane.
Can I just say something, um?
This, this, uh, actually, I've got a presentation, Alice, what are you doing?
Uh, councillor Lucas went out as tree warden and she's on the, um, castle.
Yeah. I've got a presentation to yesterday, what they're actually doing.
And she recommends.
Yeah, uh, Rob, uh, Rob Clayton, he, he's, uh, supervisor.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, you've got to take his advice really.
Yeah.
I had a walk around there yesterday and, and, um, you know, I personally feel that the proposed works, uh, even though may seem to be drastic at the moment.
Yes.
Will in future years enhance and maintain.
Landscape until re-landscape all of it. Twenty-six.
Um, I haven't counted how many trees are going to be removed. But, um, whatever we say today, I think the plan's going ahead, as we know it's part of a big project. But, um, I wondered if we could make a comment, knowing that part of the curtilage, where some of those trees are going to be removed, is part of Open Town Councils, as we found. That possibly as they're removing what looks like a lot of trees, um, that as part of the plan, that within the new fenced area, um, some trees which are on council, town council land are replaced. Because.
Yeah.
It's nice that they're going to historically restore the wall, but a lot of people, including myself, quite enjoy the fact that there are a lot of trees around there. And I think this is going to have a, a devastating impact on visually and green with what is being replaced, um, which is obviously the historic wall. And I, I'm just thinking that a careful plan should be put to them.
But just saying, I'll just bring you back into that.
There is a plan, Martin.
Probably that's not visible to the public or anyone at the moment.
It will become visible, there is a plan, there is replacement to some trees. And the trees that have been took out, and none of the old trees, it's the new, new trees that are being took out.
But they're all quite well-developed.
Well, yeah.
Trees take a long time to grow.
What we call, I just, just like to bring your attention to the proactive management regime.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm not criticizing, there, there, there's a big committee and, uh, and they are working on this quite well, but, um, just visually, I just think it's quite a shame that a lot of the trees are being destroyed to
Yeah.
bring back something from history. That's my personal feeling.
The actual trees are actually destroying the wall.
That's the problem, the, the root.
That's the problem.
Root wall is doing more damage than.
If we don't do something about it, we'll lose it altogether, it'll just destroy it altogether.
That is the problem. So, um, Martin, as I said, my personal view is that the, the short-term view will be quite, um.
There's all the wildlife implications as well, so I will vote against it based on being quite, what I consider a green supporter. Um, it's not because I don't want to see the project, but as I see a destruction of what is a very green area around the castle. Only yesterday I saw, um, two lots of kite flying there and that's because there's wildlife.
No, absolutely, but the wildlife will return.
Martin, with the actual plan as it is, uh, and the planting and everything like that, it is for wildlife. I mean, there's a big plan coming forward. This is just the first stage, uh, before it's starting forward, what they're going to do with it. They've got to get it back to where they're destroying the wall.
I personally believe that this is a management programme that, you know, should be undertaken and provided it's undertaken.
I mean, I would say something about it, Martin, anyway, too.
Thank you, but I, you know, I'm still entitled to vote against it. It's not the one against the project, it's against the destruction of what I consider quite a natural area.
So should I propose it then?
Would you like to propose it? Or second it? To accept? All those in favour? All those against?
Don't let me know it, or?
No, yeah, well, I, I'd expect mine to be minuted if I vote.
No, you don't.
Yes, you can, though.
The thing is, uh, Martin, if, uh, you know, you're taking interest in it anyway, so, uh, if you see something that's not quite right.
It's always too late though when a tree has chopped out.
Yeah, but those trees are, it's been considered what to take out.
I'm not going against the tree wall or anything like that, it's just a personal, could, could you minute that it's on environmental concerns?
Yes.
That, that would be fine, objection on based on environmental concerns.
Yeah.
And it is.
Right, the next two, um, the other one is a, um, I'll be, so as long as we just, so basically we're the same.
Yeah, we're just about safe.
The listed building, yeah.
So item eight and nine are, um, the refurbishment of twenty-five and twenty-seven High Street and to link them uh, internally to create one continuous retail shop area. The proposed link is to be created by making an opening two point seven five metres wide by two point five metres high uh, between the buildings. It's proposed, an aluminium shop front.
Yeah.
Um, to both number twenty-five and number twenty-seven uh, be replaced with modern timber shop front wall in keeping with the street C token. So that's the first part. Do you want to do this, are you sure you want to?
No, the, the second one is the same, the second one is the listed building.
Yeah.
So, um, we can do them, um, so whoever, whatever decision is made on this one, we just have to order the second one.
Anybody like to have a?
It's got to be an improvement because the other shops empty, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
David? Sorry? You go, Martin?
I, I don't have a problem with this. The only problem I see that could come up is, if you may remember, I don't know if you were on the council at the time, number twenty-seven, there was an application to combine that in a very similar way with the building society or whether they call it a bank these days, I don't know. And that was actually rejected. I couldn't understand why because the shop front, which is to replace, is pretty dated, um, and not really that nice in my view.
It might be.
And so I don't object to this, but my concerns are, and I couldn't find on the planning portal why it had been rejected before, because this is like just moving it to the left. Because that's, to me, mirrors what the estate agent and the building society wanted to do.
Apart from having been separate buildings, the two that you're proposing to put together is the same building.
So it.
Whereas the next door is a separate.
It would have been a, a, a large improvement.
Yes.
If it had gone the other way, because that also has quite a dated glass shop front, whereas this is more, or they call it modern wood, to me, it's a traditional look.
Yeah.
And that, and I don't object to that, so, but I was just pointing that out, where do, I didn't know if Alison knew why it was rejected before, because it wasn't long ago.
No.
I also just want to do more, I think more estate agents want to take it on.
Yeah, with the mountain. And their, their, their plan was almost mirror to that, and that's my concern is why.
Oh, it was more sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wanted to do.
So they wanted to link it with the bank for mortgages, is that? So that you can go through from the bank altogether?
I, I think if, um, we were minded to approve it, we maybe have to be a bit more positive or proactive about improving the look of that part of the High Street. Because obviously, there's nothing wrong with walkers in the sense we're used to it and what it looks like, but it will actually be an improvement to the outside appearance of walkers as well. So I don't know how we would work something if you were minded to.
I personally feel that it's, uh, as the High Street is slowly decaying with the shops leaving, that Walkers has been established there for a number of years. And it's good that they've got commitment in Oakham to actually develop their business.
Yeah.
But that's, that's their head office there, so it should look good and.
It will improve the look of the.
I personally feel, and realistically, the alteration that is being made, making the opening, will also be reversed in the lead if Mr Walker decided that he wanted to take it back.
Yeah, it can reverse these.
So it would be a major problem, in my opinion.
So, accept then?
Yep.
So that's second it.
All those in favour?
Can we, can we add to it before we, so I don't mean, just sort of adding the comment that it, we feel that it enhances the street.
Yeah. And that's for both items, yeah. And that's for both bits, thank you very much.
Ten forty-three.
Ten forty-three, and maybe twenty-four, thank you very much.
Should we get on?